Everybody, this is the March 6, 2023 meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. This meeting is a hybrid meeting. We're the all to the public. A content platform. Meeting is being recorded. And because it's a hybrid meeting, I don't know members of the board necessarily that we announce our names with each vote. We can do it a different way apparently and doing another meeting. It happens so many things. Let's just introduce ourselves as we're doing our any voting that we need today. So we've been custom. On calling to order the meeting of the right public library board of trustees. It is 8:00 PM. We started a little bit late. Here, I'm so with a roll call Ronald Connor Chair.
Reader Rujia trustee. And Mike sent trustee.
That's my Tavoris director.
Somebody just sitting on Zoom. Point.
I forgot.
Okay, well, we can do that. I don't think it's the order to draw to the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's end. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So here they are. You want to make a look at two minutes over here. Okay, so first. And on the agenda is to review the minutes of January 24 and February 1. Minutes, I guess, oh, pastor may have done it together. At the time. Start with January 24. 2023 meeting minutes. I'll change the motion to approve the minutes as presented by Dawson.
I have one question before I go to approve the minutes.
You have a second to approve the minutes and we'll go into.
Okay. Reader Rujia second.
Yeah.
My question has to do with due to the increase in concerns around the front of pandemic, coronavirus pandemic, et cetera. Is to still have that on as a reason to use them platform because people are not wearing masks or segregating or?
You know. As I say, very nice thing like is that.
You've been the. On this agenda, I did adjust the statement because just to show that this meeting is hybrid and will be open to the public through her and instructions to participate are.
Perfect. And so the minutes will.
It's on this agenda. Yeah. Okay. Because I, as I was. You were thinking of the.
Okay, that's fine. I was going to request an increase in the ongoing. Any other comments about the minutes? There was, there was one thing I think that I didn't mind those. No, no, something attributed to me.
Oh.
That I wanted to just add to the record. Um. Gotcha. I think I highlighted it. It wasn't major. See. Definitely. Give me one quick moment. And if I can't find it, it wasn't, it wasn't major. So. All right, let's move on. Okay, so a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the January 24, 2023 meeting. We'll, we'll vote. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rochelle, I. All my sense.
Passes the minutes are approved. Which without drive to Johnson Peter. I'm work on this. It's an important meeting to capture. As much detail as possible. Thank you for that. Oh, I found it. So we can just, it's a friendly amendment, but because I got my back. So it gets seated here today. And on the third page in the middle, it says, recess, the reroute from tables to better interact with the audience. It was actually to better interact with my colleagues.
Oh, change.
You're interacting with my, I don't think I'm a fax to people, but it just, it's easier for me to see you when we're, when we're meeting into liberation than to sit and set up and see others that they're on.
Okay.
On the stage. So yes, better. So I felt better that I went back to people on the side of the room. To see all the spaces.
Actually.
Um. Okay, so now on to the minutes of February 1, 2023 meeting of the public library board of trustees. And a motion to approve the minutes.
Here Rochelle, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the February 1. Just to me. I'd say that.
She may have any comments or. Very good. We'll, we'll vote. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rochelle, I. Anne Maitzen, I.
Next on the agenda is review of bylaw changes. I asked we had some things we wanted to talk about. I highlighted a few things.
I highlighted. I don't know if there's anything else.
Yeah. I guess we start by reviewing this process for amending. Any violence near somewhere we call it. Amendments by Article 10, these bylaws may be amended, the regular meeting board with a form present. By majority, or members present providing provided that a motion presented the amendment was duly made and seconded, seconded at previous regular meetings. So that was the key or needed to be made and seconded at previous regular meeting. Um. The, the question now is um. This is not a regular meeting of the trustees. By definition of the bylaws that we want to change. So um, let's just talk about those changes and then find a way to conform with the bylaws. Yes. It'll take a little while, but so it's the as best we can. Um. So the Article 6 defines regular meetings shall be held in the library on the second Thursday of each month beginning at 7:00 PM. Regular attendance is expected. The trustee is expected to give advance notice to chairperson to have a direct. He should not spend a meeting. Um. I'm just, if you had a chance to look at there, is there any discretion in the definition of a regular meeting? May be called by the chair. I didn't see it.
Um. Well. I mean that it's behind that date and time. And by a monthly basis.
Yeah, so.
That I.
Yeah. We've been meeting quite frequently. That's what means. Um, okay. Well, I hope let's just start talking by talking about when we want the regular meetings of the trustees. Yeah, this, this is a lot. There's a lot of this need to be changed because it says we held at the library. We're no longer meeting at the libraries. Um. Let's, let's sort of start with regular meeting. Um. Or the trustees. And thoughts about that just.
Technically, you're meeting at the library. That is a library now. The children's room.
Right.
So that is considered a library for now.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to just put a little thing in there because that's where we're at.
Except that if we meet while the children's library of the youth services is still open and we can't meet there, perhaps we could say on town premises.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, right. Yeah, these, these are.
I would keep it the second Thursday of the month. And
in, in which case I would suggest that we add a pause. Um. That, that allows for that regular meeting date to change. With best notice. I think that that's just missing here. That the the chair or the board certainly have discretion with regards to its meeting. And um. And when we, when we draft this long time ago, that's why. So even so, the suggestion is that we just keep that and change the language to say regular meeting shall be held on town from premises on the second Thursday. Which might be.
Can we change the time to six o'clock?
Yeah. That's the recommendation. So we, we are to be true to the bylaws. Um. We would need to vote on amendments to the bylaws. Eight, nine. Second Thursday of February is this Thursday. That would be the regular meeting.
Last time.
We have virtual meetings. Is there a reason why we couldn't do a virtual meeting?
I don't think so, but I can.
You know, something that's important, just a quick virtual meeting on Thursday at seven o'clock. Um. Well, seven because that's a violation of state and then we'll recommend the change that would need to be voted on on the second Thursday of April, again, at seven o'clock. That would be um 14th.
That's.
13th.
So not the night. This is Thursday.
The night is Thursday, but then it's the, the meeting, the next regular meeting after that would be on April 13th. So yeah. And then we get on real being case, uh, just to find a regular meeting. I stopped to appreciate everybody's flexibility, there's a times and of these meetings and the frequency of them. To address, we'll talk about later. Okay, so I think given that we could defer further discussion of the bylaws until till then, unless there was something. So this would allow for us to buy laws again, if there's any want to change for discussion. See. That will be less time post. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's do it and you will find out.
I'll find out for sure.
If you're first one.
A virtual.
Okay. Any other comments for our vote on anything here today? Or any of the comments on the bylaws? Just thinking about. Think it out. As we move on. Do next item is the public comment policy to review that we they presented this at our January 24 meeting. We discussed it in light of our experience that meeting subsequently and the call, the note suggesting that might be better to give more than two minutes. And I think it's solid, it's discretion of the chair. Um, it's hard as reading the room, you know, if you have two people in the room. Uh, it's easier to give more time if you have either 20. Um, they'll be careful about managing, managing the clock. Otherwise it can go on much longer than this prep spared everybody. So um, so we did have a, we did have comments we talked about in the past. I think we landed on four minutes. And I would just amend it. To say, you know, I, I, I think it's in here that the chair has discretion and of course, in the meeting um, wouldn't be just the chair's discretion. I would suggest to you um. Ask for votes, the input from the members to. So where do, where do you think Johnson Ray couldn't sort of that?
Um.
Just that's unfortunate.
I think. And I don't know if this is the version that we ended up with, but I think there is master general law for that provision that you have just, I think I want to cite that, but I don't know if this, it might live in another area. There. I don't know if we've done that or not, but I wanted, I think that's what should be included.
Yeah, we had, we had cited national law.
On the agenda.
Carry the point what means.
Yeah, so that's what I'll do.
We did put that. Does it, does this even reference the amount of time?
It does. The fourth bullet point down.
All right, I got it. Okay, so I guess I would. I would suggest then we change that to four minutes. And a single speaking opportunity. With with some discretion on either side of that, depending on circumstances. So long as everybody has the same amount of time. Probably that's the way of saying that, but where did we intend to vote on this? Or is it just?
Um, well, I think given the discussion. Um. I think I should continue to review.
Yeah. That sounds fine. Yes. I think that that makes sense. So.
Excuse me for just.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Uh, no, no, go ahead. Now, okay, go ahead. All right, so we will. We'll put this on pause. This, it's an important policy to have. Um, it's better, we have a draft policy certainly that people can use for context. Uh, and and the chair, according to national law, has discretion with the rest of the time. We did get an opinion from that's for the library commissioners, suppose. Or do this, and I think as I said, the January 24th meeting, we hadn't had public comments at a meeting in a long time. And we was actually regret like to have that genuine, what's, but we want to make sure when you do this, it's fair, open and transparent interest. This will get us there. We have a good break. Any other thoughts about this? No. Okay. Want to uh, community outreach and education. It's this will. So we yeah, we defer any further destruction on the of public comment policy. And so the community outreach and education, I think what we wanted to do here and and it's not immediacy to this, but we wanted to start to think about recruitment of people for this, or at least announce that that their plans to do this. And now as you're switching gears in terms of the timing of this uh, to talk about in this context, we put it as well as in the next, uh, business is the, um, the community forum that I mentioned before and the thought other, we, we have a few, the outreach and education committee can be in the community forum, or we do the vehicle for um broader engagement of people and seeing who might express interest. It's just a thought.
I think. We did have different examples of what other libraries have done. I couldn't find the one to, are also example, but I, so it's not clear to me if they're still operating. But I found one from the Bettendorf Library, ACville Library. I think that's Iowa, Illinois and um Northwest Virginia. Public library and then the assuming one of the assuming libraries has a YouTube video that they have talked about starting their ambassador program with students. I can send that to you. It could be like one more time to come in.
Do you have any sort of general comments or summary of these three?
Um. I liked the Caseyville examples because they're very concrete ways that ambassadors could help. You know, they defined exactly the sort of engagement that people do with and without a social media account or.
And I also see on that it's, it cut off that you could be part of this and what is this good for you?
Right, right.
Which is people always need to know what's on it, the switch of kits, what's on it for them.
You have it. Yeah. What you're doing.
Cool features.
Um, right. But I think there's examples of each. And North, like in particular, has a lot of sort of like the.
Norfolk minutes.
Virginia.
Um.
delineates different volunteer opportunities for people. And we, we get people looking to volunteer and not that it would be helpful to be able to match people up with tasks that they're comfortable with. So uh, there's like the team type program. It would just be, it would just be nice to be able to win, especially when high school students come in looking for their honors.
Community service.
Community service programs that we have designated things for them to do. I, I just and that we can support them in their quest to support the community. It, it, it's, I think it's a good thing to do and we're just, we've never had the space or I mean, um, the youth services program has always been good with matching people up with projects and jobs. It's just been a lot more challenging recently to do that. So those are my two cents for that. One of them also had an application coming. I think it was smart, but, but they have a much more robust um, volunteering program that extends beyond our initial ambassador sort of things that we have.
So we're talking about two, two different things, two different but related things. One is a community that would be part of which the mission would be to promote and form this ambassador program to support it. So that one would need to, you know, you could have ambassadors on the committee. They chose that as something that wants to do, but they people on the committee who aren't ambassadors. Way. Um. Yeah, so that, I, my thinking about this whole community outreach and education effort is to engage people in the community. Though we've got a lot of engagement now on, on two, on two fronts. One is the building um, to Southern Main Street, uh, so the memorial hall, as well as the challenges to the, to the library. Questioning the policy so that we've got on conversation happening. And this is an opportunity to, um, to engage people and work at the library ways that we tried to pass, but I think there may be enough interest to to do that. So so related to that is as I said earlier, whether we want to have the community forum, we talked about in very general terms. Sort of the way, sooner than we can actually convene the outreach and education committee rather than use that as a chart to the, to the committee, use the forum as an opportunity to engage people and find out what comes out. Part of the aspect, the forming committee would like to join, would like to participate, like what you heard here about the role of the library in the community. Um, want to be a part of that. Um. You thought of form, you said volunteer form. Um, that I'm feeling more confident about that approach because you actually have people in the room who've already um expressed that in that rather than this. I, I know that people that are in the committee could be interested, but in this way, it's, um, we'll be launching that invitation for people to, to join. Um, then because take it from there. That's my two cents. Other thoughts?
Was this the subcommittee or that you two were going to chair?
Yes, yes. Okay, that's, that's, I'm just not up to date with all my minutes. There's a lot, but
I didn't know if would it be helpful to me?
Probably.
And like we can um come up with a plan.
Right, because we were going to talk about extending invitations to particular people in the community that we know are already interested. And take it from there.
Okay. So if um you want to select a date that works for you. Just to um try to launch.
Yeah, that's a great idea. This is the seventh already correction. Thank you. So you're just moving to two of them. I don't. Still posted.
Right.
Um, who posted this, who posted the trustees and that's great. And then come back to the next meeting and make some recommendations.
And I can now have a support.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And then there'll be a recommendation to come out of that meeting to the full board for report discussion. Perfect. That's great. I like it.
I'm free until April 3.
And everything else because.
I know. I'm just. What about March 13? I'd need a ride, of course, because generally.
So that's next Monday.
That's next one. Yeah. Night.
Right. The CPC, CPC meeting, right.
It was changed to five o'clock.
Okay.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I can.
Unless, unless it's too much library.
No. March 13th is fine. Do you want to do it at like four? Or is that too much libraries?
Yeah, let's break it up. Let's break it up. We could do it in the morning.
Yeah, morning or shoot the. Early afternoon.
Just if you have to come and get me.
I'll come and get you.
And we thought giving up a car would be so easy. Early afternoon, like one o'clock.
Sure.
Okay. I will see what space I can get, although it's a working meeting. I will see what space I can get, although it's a working meeting. I will let you know. If there's, oh, they're really doing yoga in here, I'll find a space that we can.
Okay, well, it's just created, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be huge, it's better.
I'll find somewhere.
And um candidate's night has been changed to twenty seven. Hopefully for that, I don't know. It's the same. Time, same place. Um, there was a conflict.
Seven, seven thirty?
Uh, moving on then. The new business. Taking brief of the um. The Massachusetts Department Library Commissioners webinar. Uh, from last Tuesday and Wednesday, thank you. And went on.
I got on Tuesday.
Reading went on Wednesday.
Wednesday, oh, that's right, Tuesday's my birthday, Wednesday. I made I made Tuesday, I didn't realize that I'd already found out.
Good, I'm glad all of us who came previous were able to.
Very.
Legal uh legal issues for libraries on um content.
Supreme Court cases and. It was. Some of them.
Develop, develop, okay, I I downloaded the slide deck. And there are parts of it.
You were smart.
And highlighted things that just jumped out at me that. By, I I'll just start with the general comment that.
I haven't had a chance to, but um I think you saw, if you do need to. Click on the video, there is a parting up.
Right, and the. Whatever they're from, those things, those slides are.
Well, um, so a purpose, a purposeary discussion with um acknowledgement of. The amazing amount of time that's been put into this issue since it's been raised. One of the three of us, but watching the people, it's with you, um, that. Since this issue has been called to our attention, we. Reading, consulted from Jocelyn with a few people and um. I watched through the video last fall, it's available in the LLC website and so. We 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 took, we took this, these concerns seriously. Invested a lot of time in. In looking at. Educating ourselves about the issues, I'm struggling with the words here, but the bottom line is that um. We we've taken the issue seriously and we. We started out town council opinion because we knew that there would be some. That that we suspected that some of the requests were impermissible and so we. We received the community town council and then this this particular training that we. Um, attended, so reinforced with the town council and actually amplified uh in some ways. Um, provided some some citations of court cases that even forced uh some of the issues around. The constitutional issues. Um, that that were raised and I I I know in particular that that a lot of this um. What this webinar talked about or cases where books were being banned. And I I'm grateful that it wasn't issued here and sort of acknowledged that. That both would have concerns, not concerns about the. Collection of all the policy, we're not talking about banning books, it was about restricting access. To summarize, but we we talked about that as well, so those in mind practice comments.
Yeah, I think that's I love the way he phrased it, it was a relocation.
Yes.
So that the books would be relocated to another other library.
That it would in turn like restrict access or, I I I'm not I'm not aware. And entrusted this to town council to do it and. Uh, Dr. Tom Lipinski, who was, you know, presented here, um, is is a noted expert on library.
Unbelievable.
And so. An hour and a half covered so much. Like downloading the slide and looking at these slides and highlighting there are parts that I wanted to listen to again, helped to reinforce um. The message there is. That we're on the right path is. Difficult as that is um. To uh for for those who have. Important concerns about the collection of all the policy, um, we're we're bound by. Case law and Massachusetts law. What we can do. So. Anything else that jumped out at you, I can go through my notes here, but I want to.
Well, I like what you said, the change of occasion implicates first constitutional rights.
Yes. That was, I forgot which case that was, but you know, I think one of the things we wanted to do here is, um, that was the Sun versus Bush tough and. Talking about all. On Texas paper. That we want to make all of this available on public record for everybody to to be able to see, read. Watch the video, um, and and that in this context, we'll get to it in in a moment. I want to talk about some of our outreach and education related to this particular issue. Can talk about today.
So you have a couple of things that really stood out for me, one of the things that is certain is that librarians have a skill in trying to decide group books, so. The library gets to decide those things, patrons don't. Parents' decision. Not the individual child parents make the decision, not parents and not a collective group of parents in the community.
Yes, there was that case where the.
Which was, which, I mean, I had to write it down because it was just, it was very um. The other thing, and it's something I hadn't thought about a while, when he was talking about the Ramos a Cuba book. That it wasn't accurate and it, um, people said it wasn't accurate and it whitewashed, but things were really like, it's a Cuba. So it was the disinformation versus misinformation.
Right.
And um. So that having those um, the guidelines, facts versus viewpoints.
Yes.
Which something I I hadn't thought about ever. Certainly in terms of adding to the collection and thinking about um. Certain books that certainly um. Would be very germane.
With the restricted access or relocating books based upon disagreement with. Viewpoints, right, and then that book um is is a violation of first amendment rights.
And he says, don't shift your interest with motive and viewpoint.
Yes.
But those were my, I think, my, the whole thing was just so interesting, but I think those were my two biggies.
Yeah, there was a lot of really bad there and. So it's in the slides. Restricting restricting access or even putting patrons in a position where they have to ask. For a book because it's. Access is restricted. Is has a stigmatizing effect on having um. Especially with parental permission to check out a book. Now I'm starting to say things out of context, which is unfair here, but I just sort of highlighting the things here, I encourage anybody who wants to deeper dive into this. To to actually watch the uh, or at least read through the slides, the slides are extensive. Um, they go on for several pages and. I think that's the. The key takeaway from this is that we're on the right path and we're supported by case law.
Supreme Court.
The Supreme Court that. That there are limitations, there are boundaries on the kinds of activity that we can pay and.
That includes the ancillary. An adult has the right to choose whether to read a book or not read a book. An adult. Parent has the right to choose whether their child reads a book. Or not read a book. An adult does not have the right. For schools or general. People to say that they can't read the book.
Right, yes. Parents can't decide for parents.
Right.
What books should be read and what can't.
And just do their own, right?
Yes.
Just, I said in the very beginning. You. Responsible parent, you know, when you.
Take that, take this.
But it's a lot. Want to reset from here?
Sure.
No, not you, lovely.
Oh, really?
Oh, thank you, you should work back. It's been a while, most of the watching and there's no improvement. Uh, we have stepped up, do that all, um, okay, so. It was, it was very helpful and I think for 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 those who are. Better words are uninitiated to this and is making interest in in knowing more about this. What we're just talking about, it's it's a history here that um. I know some who will be watching this have, but for others, um, I think it's important that we know move towards. Doing some outreach and education to the community about about this issue, I feel we've done, we've done our homework, we've done a lot of work, we've got the um. The strong legal opinion of town council regarding some of the. Uh, suggestions, recommendations from. Who are concerned, uh, well intentioned residents, and now we need to um. Make sure that everybody fully understands. How we came to our our position on uh, maybe in the other action regarding. The library. Collection of all the policy, so I I suggest um. The approach to the law is making um. Documents available, posting them, I'm not sure where they would get posted, Jocelyn on the library website, but there's um, there are. Um, several documents that we have on the record that it would be good for the residents of the town to see. Although. Just commit a page, I think that would be great, I have, I've I've drafted here. A draft in it. The names. This word, right, called an open letter to the resident's from the public library board. Matters related to the acquisition marketing. Library materials. It's it's an outline, it's even as an outline, it's it's long, but I. I think what I'd like to do here is at least talk about the content, so there's two things I would talk about here, one is the. The content of the letter. Um, who signs it, whether it. Me, as trustees, would uh authorize and authorize Jocelyn and I, Jocelyn, who I'm directly means to share proceeds to. To sign it. Even the principal actors with with those uh. Concerned individuals, we we had a long meeting with a couple of. Terms, so. Um, but let's let's start with the overall frame of the letter. And would you like to take a minute just to just throw it before and then I'll stop talking?
From the bottom and hit the minutes. What do you mean to say?
Vincent leading. I just bought that, it sounds good. Yes.
I said that at the meeting.
Yeah. Welcome that back, that that other webinar that I watched from um. Library. She, and she was down. Well, what you said is. Um, because it was a question during the webinar, what can we do to learn collections? The recommendations, because um. As as open minded as we may believe ourselves to be, we we do have blind spots. And unconscious biases that. That can influence the collection in ways that aren't intended and um, that's that's why we have our collection involvement policy. Who's, I think it's. Citizen recommendations for the collection. Sure, there, sure there are books, and I think part of the question. For the public library collection. That's part of the interest that we post to. I I don't think it's fair to just say that sort of type of spoils and say, well, it's available on sale. I think it's important to say it's available in our collection, but it's that's what we entrust that to private staff and whatever. Where in Jocelyn in particular to sort of gauge, you know, how many copies in this book are in the sales note, for example. How frequently is it used opposed to. What's it as part of your career, or is it part of writing books, if they were a small library with limited space. That's not an excuse, not to give a book, that's just the reality of our situation, but I. I'd love to have. Books serving. That's what we're about, that's what we're about. No, no opposition to that, no presidency about that, and I I don't. And and anyway, I I haven't, I know we're doing an audit of the collection, but. Yeah, I, for those who feel that they don't have. Certain titles in our, certain viewpoints in our collection. Viewpoints that are underrepresented, please tell us. Give us a list, we have money and budgets to purchase books, we have a process by which those are measured against the criteria around collection development policies, nothing else criteria that would. Stretch certain titles, it's pretty, pretty open.
I also feel. That. Whether it was two different states, that we should all sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no, no issue with all of it.
So, I, that's I. I think there's just. I think there's more, more about the timing. And take it here, um. Would, would the two of you want to see a final copy that's been sort of edited? Or, no, I, I think if it's, if it's copy edits and if the flow is good, and. Then we could take, I think it would be, we could take a vote today and get signatures. Don't, that be signed per se. Let me do, we could do that. Um, I'm looking more procedure than, um. Than anything else. Um, anything else, but one thing. So, th- this was intended to be, like, each of these single sentences. Were part of the recommendation, realized that it was going to be far too long and won't read it, but maybe it was in basic key points that people get. And maybe these are bullet points. Um, but I think that the general context. The, the general frame of this, if you folks are comfortable with it. Then. We'll be holding to that, I think, because I don't want to lose sight of an important part of this, which is. Um, we make references in this letter to several documents, I think that's an important part of this. Letter doesn't stand on its own, but we find a way of, on this page that Justin's talking about on the other website, is to have a home for. A lot of these documents, including the, um, the old minion of town council, including. Links to the American Library Association documents, which there are several that we've referenced, yeah. The asked for library commissioners, the, the email threads associated with the concerns to post those. So people can understand what the request. Our context of the request, and, and also. This summary document that was presented as notes for the meeting, library policy meeting on December 13th, Jocelyn. Self attended. Um, with a couple of principal residents concerned. I'm sure their concerns. That summary document was the one which the, um. Town council. It is. Regurgitating his opinion. So this is a number of things here that I think are important to, um. To, to include on the website as well, they're all referenced. They're all referenced in what we're another letter. That's where it's going to get long, so I would track stuff out, it just gets too much. Yeah, here's the key points, if people want to reference the, sort of the source documents, documents records, other thing, they can do that. That will. Even, even books who are, who are interested in. And do a really deep dive into this, with the links to this. Um, the trainings, the two trainings, and the webinars that I attended. Um, anything, so I invite you to, that, that we can, we can vote on. It's in there, I think anything. Just like, we started a, we started a list for the January 24th meeting. Um, I think Jocelyn kind of built that, that these are, it's about building a resource collection. That was a very important issue. Collection development policies. Are important part of library operations and. Are, understand what the challenges are, not even challenges. Um, but we're. We've, we've got an affirmation in our approach from town council as well as experience of others. So. Let's, then, with, with that, you know, it sounds like we have agreements. Principles. And, and that list of documents on that page would be standing. But the core of this would be. This letter, this letter we live, live there, the. On council legal opinion we live there. Um, some of these other documents, or links to these other documents that are referenced, um, the American Library Association in particular. Which our work is grounded. By Massachusetts statute. And, um, the entire annual credit of, um, folks who submitted their concerns, which, yeah, I can't, I can't get enough. That we welcome those kind of comments, we welcome, we invite people that are concerned about the library. Um, to bring to our attention, so we can give them. The discussion of what they, they do. Deliberate on. So we're here for them. So. Okay. Uh, let's go back to the letter then, we, we take it one paragraph at a time. So the first paragraph, any thoughts about that?
So you fill in, you found.
Yeah, I'll provide the link. Oh, so. Okay, but, is it, I think it's fair, um, we're supposed to have a boundary with these at the library, Jocelyn? You know, both locations for anybody who doesn't have access to the internet, so if you plug in. Would be there, um, for anybody who wanted to, to look through and have the libraries opposed to. First paragraph, okay, then, second paragraph, um, I, I found that in the sec, the second sentence here, um, in the. Collection development policy for the whole brick, public library. And Justin and I talked about it, it's real, doesn't. There were carefully, um. The, the combination of the. Of collection development policies in general in Massachusetts, uh, in particular, but. That the policy is based on the library's mission and the longstanding principles of the freedom to read statement, the freedom. To view statement, the library will provide, and all the interpretations that are adopted by the American Library Association, that's all we'll talk about, I will talk about presented. As foundation to who we are. So those, those critical documents. Share. And then, and the third.
Sentence. Um, between the dates, stated unofficially received email messages from town residents and shakes where it's concerned about access to. And promotion of books. It sounds like. We're promoting this, this is, you know. If I went there.
That was their interpretation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
But Instagram.
Yeah, that was the statement, yeah.
As an, a new book. Right. That perhaps, but it wasn't promoted, that this is what you should be reading, that's my interpretation of the promotion. We don't know, and I need to phrase that.
I tend to simplify this, I think it's, it's a great point, because as soon as we start to interpret. I think it's better just to say that they express concern about books in the library collection.
Yeah.
It's very simple. And the nature of those concerns are articulated in their messages, which folks can read, that's. It's easier than for us to, um. Try someone else, though. That's fair. All right. And then that second sentence covers that.
I think. Can just say we're plus for changes, I'm containing document. Because it was more, it was the cost.
Yeah, thank you, sure. Yeah.
Are you listing the names with your initials on?
Yeah. You think, I think we, we need to do that, I think that's one question. Mention the names.
Or the emails will be attached, yes.
Well, the emails, will people have access to the emails, yeah, same page. The, the title of the, the book. I mean, it's simple by that. Say town officials, like, of the residents, of the concerned residents. Yeah. Although I think it's important to say who's there.
Yeah.
I think we do, I mean, particularly the town officials, otherwise it gets, who was there, and I think it's fair, because that's not documented in the books else. So I think it would be to want. To say that he was there. So I, I, I think actually. Starting with that, um, so sixteen reference. These are bullets, they're kind of like, they're working a timeline. Um, I guess, let's see that, the December sixteenth reference and one following that, and one after that. Um. Those are timelines, right, the divided sequence, we met on the sixteenth. Um. Requested, I can put a date in the requested town. So legal opinion. Legal opinion was presented on January twentieth, I believe. Yes, and, um. And if we have a meeting, excuse me, not January twenty fourth. And so those are all part of the timeline. It dates attached to them, and then the rest are just to sort of summarize. Um. The bit of what I have statements of. Diligence on this particular. List. Because we should. Oh, so at the bottom. We're not going to mention the committee forum. Right, yeah. We haven't scheduled any, we're going to move back to, to, with the Jocelyn. I think that would work, but. I think it makes sense, Jocelyn, the assignments also, if you, uh, the first we used to do it, and the four of us. Cause you're. I didn't have a lot to do, but. There's probably some closing statement. Well, I, I think, remind you, in case you forget, that we should include. Our email signatures on our signatures, so that people know how they can reach us by email personally. That, that would probably be the one, one statement. We heard. In addition, her, her, the president's direct line, but was encouraging. To use in the. And so, um, it's, it's attached to this, this video. Quick summary of some of the items that we should lean to or improve. Um, I think we've referenced the, yeah. Even some days of the winter. That's all. But, yeah, exactly, do you, do you think? Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get this wrapped to you and. And then this, this is a table, summary table of the. The emails and correspondence, just, that was, we might, to kind of wrap around. Super so, events, it's not been. You know, three months, which is a lot of time, it was a lot, a lot of work. Time, we've been, we're pulling the thought of respect on these profits. Um, didn't want to jump to any particular conclusion with regards to this. Been well over five weeks since we had town councils. Um. The legal opinion, which. Termined our, our response, but it was, I think it's, we're now at the stage where we need to communicate this to the, to the community at large. Um, many of whom may be hearing about this through, um, private channels, and we want to make sure that, uh. They have lots of clear. A clear record of how this, how this has proceeded. Uh. Anything else about this? That's it, I, I thank the two of you. We have a great partnership here, we've done a lot of work. A lot of thinking. I've been talking to these, these open meetings, and I think we, I'm very proud of what we've done. Proud of Jocelyn, the role in all of this. We've come to a, uh. We're, we're very close with this. Or to, uh. Using this as a learning. Opportunity for, for us in terms of other, John, who are going to face the future. Up to, um, develop this effectively as possible. But again, I thank you. Any further comments on that?
Um, thank you. Yeah.
Next. Let's see. A little bit of strategic plan, that's next.
I wasn't able to get. My format working, where we, you know, we had that priority list, and three, you could see each year, and. Wasn't able to get that working, so what I did was. I think this was the proposal we did for this current fiscal year, and then. Tilted out. The components that made up that timeframe for the strategic plans. And I changed, you know, I just updated, updated it to reflect the most recent. Fiscal year. I don't know. I feel, once again, I got the activities from the strategic plan. And I feel like we're in an entirely different place than we were when we went through this process last year even. Um, so I don't. I don't know if this is something you want to take. With you, I think a lot of these activities carry over into. The next fiscal year.
Yes. I could.
Um, and then I noticed that. We didn't designate a lot of activities for fiscal year twenty fourth, but I think that's because a lot of them. Were looked at with our facilities issue. Um, and when we started their strategic planning program, we were still at Main Street. It was during COVID. We might have just been learning that we wouldn't be allowed to open again, or.
So we don't want to really participate in that.
Right, but yeah, was a part of, um. Strategic planning process and some things at the time, so. Um. I don't know if you want to take it back and look to see if there are any priorities that. You want to see for another fiscal year. I can, I feel like this is such a working, not like that.
Thank you. I, I would agree with that. It's been, it's been an extraordinary year. We built the plans for, um, renovating and rehabbing, restoring the Smithmore Hall. Um. The, um, challenge to the. Modern collection policy as, um. This is super. Think we. The, the library, to your credit, Jocelyn, um, we kept the ship steady. Through this, with, without, you know, the trustees having time or process or this kind of planning. Um. Strategic planning work, because we invested our time. Other places, uh, which is by. Other places, which is why the, the library's been doing well. Acclimated as best you can to the dual location, um, approach, and yet we do need to look forward. Strategic plans and action plans will guide us to do that. So. I'm fine with. Thinking we're not, not. Being able to step back and brought, I feel, brought closure now to the discussion of the, at least. Closure in my mind, um, we're open to a conversation about the collection building policy, but I think we can rebook this attention now. Steve, which is all part of this community engagement, the organization and education committee is to get us back to a place where. We can be the best resource we can, residents. That sounds good. Good. Now. Or a public comment. Enjoying on Zoom, so we have two people in the room. Uh, public comments.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to stand up?
Yeah, I mean, it's never been, I'd say, here in my brush.
Um, my name's Elise Sennett. In the other, twenty seven, I'm on Wellington Street. I'm sorry, twenty seven, twenty seven, I'm on Wellington Street.
Okay.
I was down on the one system. Um, I went to, very excited about the library, and I appreciate all the work you do. I'm listening to what you do in this meeting. It's really given me, um, an idea of how to learn. Um, I did want to say, I went to the walk through of the new library, it's so exciting. But I noticed, I noticed some things that I wanted to, to ask questions about this away to the next meeting, and this is, I guess. I noticed that. They're, um. Two names I noticed, first of all.
Come around, just, just sort of where it happened to be here, you're quite likely to like it, but the.
Well, I just wanted to.
So, maybe no.
Okay, when I was walking through the, the loft, and I noticed they're closing off the access to the basement. In four years, and I noticed in the kitchen, when you rent the floor up, you're going to block off the access to the basement, in the kitchen. So the entire building, you can't get into the basement unless you go outside, and I, and I. And I was at the first meeting, when, uh, Mr. Kay said that the long term goal is to cut an elevator to the basement, so. I was surprised they're blocking off the basement, and I asked, I asked, how are you going to get to the basement? And Mr. Moment told me that you can't use the basement at all, we can't use the basement at all, and I'm going to use the basement. And I was surprised because. I mean, the little point of getting a library is to have a beautiful new space. The basement's half of the building. So I asked him, I said, you can use it for storage, right? Or office space? And he said, no, we can't use it at all, not even the people that work in the library can go down in the basement, very limited time, they can go down and grab something, go back up. What they're going to grab, I don't know, because we can't use it for storage, we can't use it at all. And I was surprised, because of the meeting, he said it's a long term plan, the elevator, because is the elevator. Even, is the elevator in the, the financial breakdown of, of what, what we're asked for the budget? So I wanted to, uh, I wanted to see if there's any elevations. Project available, any drawn up plans, anything exciting to look at? But, because it seems like the design elements, the entire project, the design elements are in flux. I don't know where the elevator's going to go, it can't be on the plan, because he doesn't know where the elevator's going. I mean, it could stop at all the floors, which will stop us from raising the floor. Or putting a ramp on the stage. It's an important part. It's an important part of this, 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 how the cost, right? So, how can I vote to pass funding? On a library project? When I feel we're being completely honest about the elevator? I felt when I was at the Walkspur. That, um. The elevator's definitely part of the plan, but nobody's talking about it. And then we're being asked to fund something that's going to cost way more. I mean, an elevator's going to cost none to twenty thousand dollars. We can't use the basement until we have an elevator, we're handcuffed. I am having trouble funding this project, and I want a library. I want a library, really, you know, I'm really kind of upset about the whole library issue, which a lot of people are, I'm sure you are. You know? So what I wanted to have is a, is a rendering or a plan with this project, what are we funding? I would, I would like to see that. Right? And I don't know who to ask to see, what's the finished plan? Where's the elevator go on this plan? This is hard for me to fund something. That, that really we can't use and we won't be able to use long term, we can't use the basement for long term. I just wanted to mention that, because. I feel, and. I feel like we're going to pass this, we're going to start, we're going to pass it, and we're going to be, um, locked into it, which I agree with all of you are. Um, and then there's going to be. A lot of, um. Costs that are going to be buckled into it, or we can't use it at all. So I just said that three times, did it get, did it get with you? Um. That aside, I really want from a library that I've been using, so excited for my year. Um, also, I just wanted to say, I was inspired to, um, I'm wondering. Why can't, with the libraries, the library can start some kind of fundraising? To, to ground this library, it's, it's, I mean, it's a hot topic, I know it's. And social media and the whole library thing. And I was wondering if, uh, if you were having a fundraiser or some kind of idea to have a fundraiser, because I would like to help. Inspired today, listening to you guys talk about it, and sitting right next to friends in the library. To, to help some kind of fundraising, um, so that the community will see that, that. We're all trying to fund this, because, um. I just, when you look at, at the, the C P. I think that's another question.
Yes.
Um, I feel like they're kind of taking money out of different projects to fund. One project. And, and that, and that, and that hurts my heart, because the whole town, I really, the fire station. Is important to me.
Can I just, yes, one thing, with the CPC, those funds are going to be used for certain things, but the fire department is, is not one.
It's not a store, it's a store. I mean, they, they fund the historic buildings, there's part of it that would be historic, but like the library itself, it's. It's historic too, we could take money from historic funds, but when you raise the floor, you're, you're getting rid of a lot of historic features. My question, I have another, when I was doing a walk through, it's like, why don't we put a chairlift to the stage? And then doorway, there's a sliding button door, a drawer like with that sliding button, where you can walk into the kitchen. Or wheel into the kitchen. And you can have a chairlift that goes up to the stage. And that way, we don't need to put a ramp up, and we don't need to raise the floor up. Do you know what I'm saying? It just seemed to me like the design elements. Aren't really well thought out, and they're, they're changing every day, or, you know, not with the elevators, not even. Not even on it, and I don't think the town realizes that the elevators are absolutely necessary, or we cannot use the basement. I appreciate your statements today, and I, and thank you, that's pretty much all I have to say.
I have a little bit. Understand that, that's, okay?
Sure.
Okay, um. When the town purchased the property for the library. It was my understanding that because the library was closed. Where, you know, we were not able to open that location, our old community building. In order to maintain our reciprocal relationships with other. Libraries, which means, um.
Sales.
The sales system, yeah. We, we had to be open. And that's why we're in our true top.
I'm glad that you have.
No, but it's, it's, it's. A long explanation to get to a short answer. And the town realized that that wasn't an acceptable solution for library services. So when the opportunity came. To purchase the building, they, you know, they were able to find funding for it without impact, further impact of the tax care, I should say. And my understanding was that in order to show. The Mass Port Library Commission, who is our. Our certification agency. That. We were serious about moving in, you were just focused on that main level. And that the lower level was something that was happening down the pike, and that would include an elevator. At that point in time. I know that's not the explanation that you're looking for, but it was an acknowledgement of. Getting better library services to the public sooner. With the other projects that the other capital needs in the town, such as the fire, sanction, and the. Um, schools, the schools, that is. Bridget, it like, oh, whatever, yeah, there's a lot of. I shouldn't even say competing, we're all together, but there's a lot of other capital needs as well. So it was kind of a. An approach to be able to. Do what we could to get one of the pieces. As fixed as we could. I don't know if that helps you in any way, but. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm discovering is, is. It's not that, it's not honest about the cost, it's like. I don't feel like the elevator, I don't think the true cost of the building is known, and I feel like we're being asked to fund something that could keep coming back. Yeah. Funding, because we don't really know, I think it's a little. Just deceptive for the town to kind of not understand exactly the magnitude of the project. And, um, you know, we bought a house here, and when we renovated it, it's a sixteen hundred year old house. We didn't have a clear plan. On what we were going to do, so we spent twenty years. Doing it in pieces, and we never had. The perfect house, because there was never a plan, so what I really like to see, if I'm going to fund something, I want to see it a rendering. Finished building drawn and celebrate that, and to know there's an elevator, and to know where it is in the building, because right now, nobody knows where the elevator's going. So these costs are going to skyrocket, because plan ahead, the elevator can stop at all levels. We don't need to raise the floor, you know, it's like. Next year, we decide, oh, we didn't need to do that because of this, and then that's where the, you know, that's where the money, I think, is posted. And it would be better to fund a project, if I knew right from the get go, what's happening, instead of feeling like later on down the road, like. We're going to not be compliant, so we're going to have to fix something else, and that reach that system is very, um. There's like five compressors and five zones, because we can't use the basement, I. It's just so expensive. The, um. Heating and cooling systems, like everything about the project is just really expensive, and it just doesn't feel like it's all integrated. Is it possible to get some kind of finished rendering of what the, your goal is only here?
I can look into that.
Yeah, because that would be really exciting. To, to look at that and know what's going to happen with your. As a, as a resident, and then I can, then I can get behind funding it, if I know that. There's not something that I don't know about, that I'm going to find out after, I've already signed off on this, oh, it's going to be another two million dollars. That wasn't really said anything about on the front clearly, you know?
Uh, so, yeah, I'm looking for your points, thank you.
I appreciate.
One, one thing is, we, we have. From that stage where there'll be, um. A broader community conversation about it, the, the, the votes they placed at town meeting, that's the, that's the schedule, that's in June. And we're, we're, we're working on the funding piece, and. I don't want to speak for the trustees, or for the, the more important, the, um, by the building community, which I'm co-chair, but I haven't been through this process many times. I can't imagine that we wouldn't have some community dialogue with the type of your company about. Yeah, so. And your fundraising comments, they're on along. We part, kind of campaign, which has, uh, two houses and six. And so we have the strategy set, and I have a background on it forward. So, yeah, and there are the fundraising strategies that will be by people.
I think that's a very, uh, very people interesting in doing, and to recruit new members through fundraising. As well.
I think your points are, are well made, in terms of, still, it's being a little bit too encapsulated, perhaps, or, and, and that's not, not the intent. That tour was intended for the CDC. And so, for, for the community at large, um, trust will take post.
But, I was, I mean, so it's like, can I just get back in CPC, and, and the comment you made about, um, using funds of a project? Like I said, it can only be used for certain things, and at the meeting that they had. A couple of weeks ago, someone asked for the other, other projects, um, that want some money, and you're not giving it to them. Because of this project, and they said, no, no one else that qualified. Has asked.
Is there a vote, you know, project, because in this group, I was talking.
There, it was just voting project, it's, it's something in the meetings, was your partner about to tell, I don't understand, was that? You'd have to ask if you need.
You'd have to go to the CPC meeting and.
I would feel bad if they had all of your projects.
And then, you know what I'm saying? Which project, on what we had a meeting, um. There was fifty thousand dollars to buy a piece of property. And apparently, the property was owned by several family members. And what happened was, one member said yes, and then the other members of the family found out and thought they could get more money, so they. Nitched, they said, no, we're not selling you that money. But, um, that's all that I know from that, you have to go to the CPC committee, Kevin Smith is the chairman.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate it, Tom, thank you, thank you.
And we, and you don't have a library building. We don't want to be just a meeting, but, just raise the points, and I think there are other things we want to talk about. This one, that it would be the CDC.
Yeah, excellent. If I wanted to, to see some books in the library, where would I, because I would love to see the Foxfire, uh, books in the library. Where, where do I, where do I make requests for? For, um, you can make them with me?
Okay.
Like, and we, yeah, what have I, thanks.
So it's the Foxfire series, which I, I have several volumes of it, is a continued, you produce stories.
It's a print.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a resource, you know, because that's really. Thank you.
Yeah, a public comment.
Okay.
What order do you continue to talk?
I just want to. Why not remember, is that friends, maybe, something else? But it was brought up. I remember a while ago, it came up to vote for the library. And it was voted down. And I forgot the price, and someone made the comment recently. We voted for that. Back then. It would have been all paid for by me.
It's twenty some odd years ago.
I'm sorry, I think it was. You know.
But it would be paid for by.
Two thousand and six or seven, and then that one.
I think that was the very, very first, um. Two million dollars.
Yes.
So this, nine doors. Yeah.
The thing. Same level, we're going to.
Love to see you.
Other public comments, uh, we, uh, in motion going to executive sessions. We want to reconvene after second session. So if you're watching. So I've been watching the other night, which that happened on. The language that doing that is, we think of a motion. To a lot of, you know, we got something, I can all just.
I think it's just that after the emotion, make it out. In the motion, we've mentioned that we are not going to reconvene at the whole session, but. Already this.
Yes, okay, that makes, that makes sense, so can we have. Two of you make a motion to go into executive session and not return to open session. Purposes of the executive session are stated here.
And do I need to read?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I know that we go into this session and not return to. Open session, uh, in order, uh, under Mass Pella laws, chapter thirty, A, section twenty one, A two. To conduct strategies, strategy stipend. And preparatory for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-use, non-union personnel, this is Anne Lightson.
Do we have a second?
You're original, my second.
Discussion. But then we will both then, Ron O'Connor, I.
You're original, Anne Lightson, I.